Okay. Good evening, welcome to the Board of Selectmen meeting for Thursday. This is April 20th, 2017. I'll stand for the pledge allegiance to the flag. Dave Conlon, distinguished moderator and leadess, I pledge allegiance to the flag.
... of the United States of America, in due part, with its chains, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Opening comments from the board?
I want to thank the Department of Public Works and the Renee's Brothers for taking care of our major catastrophe we had last week. They did a great job and they got us back up and running, so that's all.
T?
I'd like to invite the whole town to come up to the town meeting to support the selectmen. We are trying to begin the process of selling the Coast Guard houses as single-family units. And the key here is beginning the process. Please come up and support us, thank you.
Thank you. I'll hold my comments to the very end. First, other business, to approve the minutes of April 6th and April 8th. I want to take a motion to approve.
I move the Board of Selectmen vote to approve the minutes of 4/6/17 and the minutes of 4/8/17. Second?
Motion remains. Second, discussion on the motion. Hearing on the, all those in favor say?
I'm not through.
Okay, I'm sorry.
4/8 is not true, so we're going to have to eliminate that one. That has to be taken care of in a different manner. 4/6 I'll approve, 4/8 I will not. You can vote on it. My answer is no, for 4/8.
What's the problem with 4/8?
It's not how it happened.
I'm sorry?
That's not what happened.
Okay. So, we're only going to approve the minutes of 4/6.
Second, I'll second that.
Okay, motion been made, remade, so we'll just eliminate the minutes of April 8th, which is the emergency meeting on the four sewer main. Okay, all those in favor, sing by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Ladies and gentlemen, tonight we're going to be reviewing the town hall with our distinguished moderator, Dave Conlon, who usually does an outstanding job, always has, and he's got his hands full for this one. Mr. M.
I think we have a guest here that wanted to ask a question.
Question, you have a guest?
Dan.
Dan, you want to say something?
I have a question about the town hall.
Town hall, yes.
Yes, the town hall, the slip, the construction work that was supposedly be done at the end of April. And now, I understand that it's going to be shut down, the town slip, access to the slip, from the 15th of May through the 1st of July. And so, what I'd like is clarification for that, because there's a lot of people who use the town hall facility only for the summer, you know, pretty much June through early September.
Right.
And how are we going to access our boats? There's a lot there. So could you clarify exactly what the limitations are going to be on the public's access to the area?
The board decided to, the following. The contractor did not order all the material that he needed to finish the slip and to start the slip. He needed this revetment, and he didn't get it in time. And he was going to finish the project, say like July 1st. And he kept going at this. We told him no, and we told him and advised the board, told him and the town administrator and the superintendent of Public Works that what we're going to do is let all the boats, all the, May 15th, all the boats have to be off the wharf. And then on May 16th, he'll start that project to finish the slip. Now, it shouldn't take him more than two to three weeks to do the slip. And we felt it was better to do it now, shut down the slip until he finishes it, and then instead of doing it in the October, November, which is crazy weather. And we discussed it with, we invited all the boat owners and the lobstermen, and the lobstermen, it was one of their suggestions, so that everyone can use the pier, lobsterman, and the wall, the sea walls, the wall next to the parking lot is all pointed up, and so they can use that at ITI. Once your boat is in the water on the 15th, all you need is your pram, am I correct?
Yes, that would be correct.
Yeah, so I mean, we could, you're going to have to, you know, juggle that a little bit, either take it down, we'll get some, you know, permission from the jury club or something to work through this as best we can, because the slip's going to be closed. We felt it best to have that project completed during May and June. So you've got two weeks in May, four weeks in June, he claims he can be totally completed by July 1st.
I, can I speak now? I never agreed to this, and I never agreed to signing a contract with that contractor. First of all, I don't trust him. He's demonstrated that, they've demonstrated that they, I don't think they're going to do it. And we're telling citizens that we're going to close it down, May 16th to July 1st, so that's more than two weeks. That's a month and a half, that's a month and two weeks or more. And wait a minute, and I'm not comfortable signing the contract with this contractor that, first of all, after, after we had the blowout here a couple of weeks ago, the guy never showed up down there. The wall still isn't pointed up, it's not finished, he had, still hasn't repaired the footings. I mean, I, again, I don't, I'm not comfortable with it, just not comfortable with it. I won't sign the contract, okay? I want the bonding company here, and I want the contractor here. I want to hear it out of their mouth, and I want to know, and in that contract, I want to see a penalty. There's no penalties in it, there was no penalty in the first one, which is ridiculous. So I am telling you, I'm not signing any contract for anybody until I see proof put in what they're going to do. And I'll believe it when I see it, if they, if they actually do the job. From what I saw, it was a disgrace, an absolute disgrace to the town of the heart and the engineer. All that shoring that they had to order, they went back and forth, back and forth, they ordered it late because they couldn't get it right. So I'm not signing anything. So I hope that answers your question, too. I'm not comfortable with July 1st. These guys say they can't do it in the wintertime, well, are they from Florida, are they Bahamas? They knew what they were signing when they signed that contract. They knew that they had to have it done in December and January, this would have been the perfect year. We had some 70-degree days, if I recall, they could have had that thing done. And no answers, I have no answers. I have, I don't hear anything from the engineers, I don't hear anything from the contractor. Nothing. So when I hear from them, when they come to the meeting and present it, a new contract with penalty clauses in it, I'll think about signing it. I'm done.
Hold on, Dave. Jeff, will you answer that?
Well, certainly. We hope to have the details shortly. We've been working with the contractor to line up all the details, and we'll bring that forward for discussion. We'll bring it forward to, I'll bring it forward to each of you individually, and we've told them we have to adhere to the timeline that was specified.
Why don't you do this?
Again, I've said, I want them here. I want them here. Is that a problem, having the contractor come here and explain what happened? You're talking about a $600,000 proj, I mean, we don't have a lot of money. I mean, if it was a big city, sure, you could just throw your money around. But we're, this is the heart. $600,000 is a lot of money. And this con, there's no contractor here, I got a really, a terrible answer from the engineers that you hired, that was hired. Our engineer never showed up, not comfortable with it at all. I want them here.
Jeff, why don't you put it on the agenda for the week after the town meeting, which will be our first meeting, and put that right on the top of the agenda at 7:30, and have all parties, you know, the superintendent of Public Works, the consultant, Charles, the contractor, anyone involved with the wharf.
And we have to take care of the people, the citizens of the town of the heart also. Now, I just, I love the fishermen dearly, my relatives are fishermen, but I got to tell you, there's other people involved, there's a sailing program, we have to think of all those people that need to use that slip. What are you going to tell them?
So what are your suggestions?
My suggestion is to make them do it next year, in the wintertime. Yeah, that is exactly when they were supposed to do it, not in October or September, because that's when the fishermen have to come out of the water, okay? They knew what they were getting themselves into when they signed that contract. This is not new to them, okay?
Well, you've heard all this the last four weeks, we went through this whole thing.
I've been asking for this for two months, to have somebody come up here and explain why they're not working down there.
All right.
May 4th, I'll put it on.
Have them all here.
Okay.
I have a question on that subject matter. So apparently you've told the people who have, who keep their boats on the wharf that they have to have them off by the May 15th?
Well, that's the normal.
That's fine.
That's normal, to get it ready for.
But there are a lot of people that don't keep their boats on the wharf.
Betrayal.
And they put them in after May 15th, because they can't do it so well when the wharf is filled boats. In fact, I happen to have an arrangement to have it put in on May 20th. But if you're saying that this is going to be closed down, I'm wondering.
Well, we're trying to get.
You're going to have a lot, and this is, this June, it's really important to have your boat in the water. We have tall ships coming.
Absolutely, I know.
And so if you can't get your boat in the water, and the tall ships are going by, you're losing a lot of what you invest your money in a boat for. So I wonder about.
The contract, there's an option that do you have the, half the slip, it's like a roadway? Do you have the roadway and then finish that, and then shut it down, and then do the other half?
I, I think we talked about this on the 4th.
Yes.
Make a, make a decision on the 4th, because we have other business tonight.
Yep. Okay. Well, now turn the meeting over to the town moderator, distinguished town moderator.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So this is our annual meeting to discuss the issues that are going to arise at town meeting, and to talk about the procedural aspects of how to handle it. What we'll do tonight is go over each of the articles and the motions we'll take a look at, but mostly just categorize the articles as to what kind of a vote is required, and see if there are any difficulties anticipated, either by the finance committee, or by the Board of Selectmen, or by the town administrator, or anybody else within earshot. So we'll start off, not with Article 1, which is the elections, and the elections start on Saturday morning at 7:00 a.m., and you have until 8 o'clock Saturday night to vote. And I think the elections are all downstairs again this year.
They will be.
So the elections will start first thing in the morning. They'll be there. The second one is the typical borrowing clause to allow the town to borrow from time to time in anticipation of revenue after his business. This is a borrowing article, so under the law, borrowing article requires a two-thirds majority vote. I assume there are no difficulties with that.
May I ask a question?
You can.
The omnibus article is Article 13, and it's historically been Article 8. Do you have any explanation as to why it's Article 13?
So I don't, but perhaps someone else will have.
Yeah, certainly. Article 8 became Article 13 because the selectmen and myself decided to move certain items forward so that they could be considered before the budget, and then if, whatever the outcome of those individual articles were, then could be rolled into the budget. So you'll see items such as the Coast Guard housing, the ambulance enterprise, those were brought forward for that purpose, and so that slid the.
I know, I moved to have them brought forward, but why would they interfere with the omnibus article? Why would that make the omnibus article move to 13?
Because you need the capacity, so.
Capacity for what? I don't get it. It's, it should have stayed at Article 8.
We had agreed that it would move down so that we could accommodate the others in front of it, so it's just a matter of numerical?
Well, I'm part of the we, and I don't believe I agreed to moving it down. It just doesn't feel right that it's moved down to 13. Does the outcome of 8, 9, 10, 11, and 12 affect 13?
They are all financial articles, and so especially on, for instance, 8, which is the ambulance enterprise, that would have an impact depending on the outcome. And the others were deemed to be more appropriate to move those forward.
Okay, thanks.
Enzo wanted those moved up front.
No, T wanted them moved up front.
Well.
And they were moved up front, because me and Enzo, and you voted them, but we didn't touch, the explanation to me that day was, you don't touch Article 8 because it's the omnibus article.
I do recall asking a simple question.
Well, I have a feeling that Article 13 will be just as lucky as lucky in Article 8.
I hope so.
So going to Article 3, this is a standard article for affecting transfers from various, to take care of various fiscal year 2017 expenses, and it's a straight appropriation, so it's a majority vote. Is there any hidden issues in the transfer issue?
That one is pending. We are evolving Article 3, so we will provide that to the boards when we have it finalized by the beginning of early next week. And I understand the finance committee is meeting in the morning of the town meeting, so we will present the details of that then.
All right. At any rate, it will remain a majority vote. Article 4 is appropriations for taking care of the snow and ice account, again, a straight majority vote. Article 5 is the salary and classification plan, and the question of whether the town will amend the plan. I haven't seen the schedule of it. But it's in.
It's in the book.
Okay. I have it in that book.
I'll let you get your house key.
All right. Now, I think this is a straight majority vote, but I also, this is naming the pay, and it's not authorizing the pay. So this is a straight majority vote and not a ballot vote, correct?
Correct.
So. Article 6 is to see if the town will vote to fix the salary and compensation of elected officers. Is that in the same position as Article 5? This is a ballot vote, this is a. Article 7 is to see if the town will authorize payment of prior fiscal year bills. Are there bills that are the subject of this?
There are none that we know of yet, and we don't believe there will be, so that'll be a recommendation for indefinite postponement.
That will be fine. If we do, if there are bills, as you know, it's a four-fifth majority vote that's required. Article 8 is a motion to adopt an enterprise fund for the ambulance service. And I believe that also is a straight majority vote.
Correct.
And it's also non-ballot. So is there any likely issues in connection with that motion?
There's a request for indefinite postponement by the finance committee, and the selectmen have been, would like to bring that forward for discussion, and so we'll be talking, continuing to talk about potentials for a further discussion on that article when it comes up.
Any comment from the FinCom, no? Article 9 is a motion to rescind the vote from 2008 for disposal of the, what are referred to as the Coast Guard housing. And as we look before the meeting, I don't have anything that suggests that a rescission of a prior vote of this type is anything other than a straight majority vote. And this has got the recommendation of the FinCom. So any expected difficulties or any intricacies that we should be aware of?
It seems pretty straightforward.
Just one question, the sale of land only requires a majority vote?
The sale of, well, the closest I could come from town meeting time is the abandonment of a project for which a loan has been taken out, requires two-thirds of the majority. But there's, I'm informed that there was no loan taken out in connection with the project that was set out to bid back in 2008. So I don't see anything that changes the quantum.
Would the minutes from the 2008 meeting clarify what requirement vote was used to approve the 2008 vote?
I'm told that it was a straight majority, but we will check that and find out, because whatever it was there, it will have to be again here.
It was, it was 40 against, and a very, quite a large number for, for the vote, I think it was like 160 to 40?
Yeah, it certainly passed by two-thirds, but the question is whether it was required to pass.
Correct.
So we will check that, and if there is a problem, we will, we will change that quantum of vote. Good point.
I know I saw it somewhere.
All right. Article 10 follows also on the Coast Guard housing, and this is to authorize the selectmen to take action to dispose of the four-acre parcel of land. And the FinCom is recommending indefinite postponement, which is a straight majority Article 11 is borrowing for the Massachusetts Water Resource Authority to replace lines and et cetera. And so this is also a two-thirds majority vote. Article 12 is to see if the town will vote for a sum for emergency repairs to the town water distribution and sewer collection system. And this is an appropriation? So it would be a straight majority vote. Article 13, lucky 13, is the omnibus article. And we'll go through this in the standard form that we, we do at every town meeting, every annual town meeting. So we'll read each of the items, and we will take passes from anyone who has a particular interest in a particular item, and then discuss them individually, those that have been passed Is there any particular quagmire that we may find ourselves in in connection with that?
We have two positions that were removed from the budget by, in the FinCom budget, but was not removed, or was funded in the Board of Selectmen budget, so that is an item for discussion.
Well, I think it also ignores the point of if Article 8 passes, this budget, we'll need a different budget, because the budget in here doesn't assume an ambulance enterprise fund. So if the ambulance enterprise fund passes, there was a different budget that incorporated changes to an ambulance enterprise fund, so this one could be complicated by that as well.
So there are those three.
And another question in the omnibus, typically we make a resolution at the beginning of town meeting in requiring how people make changes to the budget.
Yes.
Are we doing that as we typically?
We've been doing it every year since 1982, and it's been pretty much the same motion, and I would, I would expect that we do, we do the same motion this year. Is there any issues about that?
So where was the money taken from? The assistant treasurer collector has not been funded by you people.
Correct.
And you put the money where?
It's. Put in the.
Reserve fund.
Yeah. Which in the resolution can't be a place that you take the money out of.
The reserve fund can't fund seller salaries.
The reserve fund can't be used to fund a pass in the budget, so it has to come out of another line.
Why did you do that?
Because we, anytime that we've taken money out of the budget, we always put it in the reserve fund.
No, 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 but why did you cut that position?
Why did we cut that position? Because we've been talking about receiving cost reductions through attrition for years in the finance committee. And this is the first time that there has been a position that has come open during the finance committee season. Usually they're hired in the off-season when we're not around. We advised the town administrator long before the position was filled, that we were heading in this direction, and we continue, and we did what we thought was in the best interest of the town.
That's a key position, you realize that? When the treasurer collector just retiring, Kathy Formolari, now we get Kathy Kooch is going in there, and that assistant treasurer collector is a key position in this town. Extremely, you know, the workload that's in there, it's sufficient for two people. And I'd like to have you reconsider that, have the board reconsider, because I'm gonna, I'm gonna go after that position, okay, fund it, because we've hired a crackerjack, young lady, with accounting degrees, and she's very, very good. And I didn't want, I would not want to lose her, number one, we've already hired her. And that's a key position in the town hall. I mean, I can't strongly ask you to reexamine that position. Did you ever talk to Kathy Formolari about it?
Spent a lot of time talking about this position, we talked to the town administrator about it at length, and we made a decision that we felt was in the town's best interest, and it was a unanimous vote by the finance committee. Every member on the finance committee agreed on that and voted on that.
Well, there'd be a fight for that one. We'll present to the jury. And the jury's the town meeting. I, I use that as a, you know, but.
And we also eliminated a position at the DPW.
Another position, too, we might as well discuss that right now. You understand there's only five people down at the Public Works, and two of those, out of the five, work 24/7 on the nine satellite pump stations and the major pump station down at Lowlands. So they're working, two of them, going down in this, in these sewer main to make sure the pumps are working properly every day. So you're down to three people. And, you know, the days when we had 10 or 12 Public Works, it was the old days, and everybody, you know, we, we've been cutting, you know, there's another key position. And with the new superintendent, he took his time to do the evaluation of the interviews and to pick an individual that has great skill set to fit where he needs him. And I believe he's just about there, am I right? And I believe he's just about there, am I right, John?
Yes, yes.
And so that was another position, you know, I mean, you're talking to cut the Public Works by, you know, the percentages, I mean, you've got five people in the Public Works. Sure, we've got some help coming on, but, you know, it's part-time and then even the eighteen-year-old kids that we hire for the summer, they have to be supervised because they're running machines and, you know, I, I, you know, I'll be honest with you, I'd like to have you reevaluate because again, that's another position that I'm gonna hopefully get passed at town meeting. And I, the accountant's not here, but I'll find a place where to take that money to get it solved.
It's actually not in the general fund budget.
I know, I know. But I, I want, I want to let you know that, okay? I'm...
And once again, that was a, this committee unanimously voted to make that decision after years of discussions on reducing our headcount through attrition.
You realize that years, you know, I understand that, you know, the Finance Committee's, you know, really wants to, you know, be heard and to save money and et cetera, et cetera. The problem is you're cutting positions that are key. It's like, it's like these two positions are key. I mean, this is not something that, that's not something we can, you know, you look at.
The positions themselves, as, as the recommendation notes, that the decision was made not based on the individuals who may or may not have been identified or the performance of the people who came before them. And this is, this is my second year on the committee. For at least those two years, we'd had an ongoing discussion involving the Board of Selectmen and the town administrator with the general purpose of trying to reduce expenses via several means and one of them, as agreed for two years, was to cut through attrition. Attrition came up, the positions weren't cut. So if the positions are critical, by all means fill them and, and I guess what we're suggesting is just find somewhere else in the budget to fund it, move something. If, if the positions are that important that they supersede something else, then fine. But...
How much were we putting in the reserve fund without, without funding, without...
There's a hundred and twenty-five thousand that's in the, was in the budget for the reserve fund from the Board of Selectmen and then fifty-four thousand was added for the new position.
Okay. And the DPW position is, that comes out of water and sewer. Right, so that's not going to be, that's, that's, that's a little bit different. So, and normally we put what, about a hundred and twenty-five thousand in the reserve fund? I don't understand why we're, you know, again, I think you're gonna ask one person to do a job of two people.
Should we, do we want to have this discussion now or shall we wait till the town? The accounting system today, the town itself uses one accounting system. The school uses a separate accounting system. There's a, there is a ton of automation. It's twenty seventeen, there's a lot of manual work, duplicated work, the figures that we get from the accountant and very much appreciate the work and the responsiveness and all that, but the amount of stuff that has to be done to get what should be very straightforward numbers for frankly, a budget that is not that big, this, to your point earlier, now it's a small town, this is not, this isn't the US budget. There's a lot of manual work that through efficiency, through automation, through just bringing things up to modern times, should not require all this manual effort to happen.
I, I believe that...
The payroll.
Payroll's not automated, it's run once a week. I don't know how many of the people at home get paid every week at this point. People get paid every two weeks, every month. You know, there's a lot of manual activity that's happening because it's happened that way for years and our, our contention is that, that needs to be looked at and sort of forced into question.
Okay, so did anybody talk to Kathy Formilari? Did anybody on the committee ask them what they, what their jobs were? I know I did and I, I have a list of what their jobs are and I understand where you're coming from and I asked her also about the, the software program. And by the way, software programs, they can pull the license on them at any time. So if we pay a half a million dollars for a software program, they do it to me all the time in my business. They can just pull the license and then you have to buy another one. So if you pay a half a million this year, five years from now, you might pay another half a million. And I, I can understand your job, you guys do a great job, but... And there are probably some areas where we can automate and we probably could go to a two-week pay period. I think that was part of what you wanted to do.
Negotiate, yeah.
Negotiations and if, if they're all for it, that's fine and I'm, I'm all for a two-week pay period. But to take, to try to implement a software program now, a, a, a system now, it'll cost the town probably, well, I, I have the figures, six hundred thousand, I think.
Then you're significantly overpaying.
Well, I mean...
So, so let's put that, you know, put that together, put it out for bid, et cetera. I mean, there, there are other towns in the Commonwealth that are using software systems that we might be the first ones to do it.
It's called Munis, that's the, that's the big one. That's a half a million bucks. That's five hundred thousand dollars.
It can be. Again, you're talking about a very limited size budget with a limited number of departments, et cetera. It's not the same as implementing for a larger, a larger city, et cetera. We should look at that. But again, that question, that discussion has happened at least for the last two years. I don't know how many years before that and no action has yet been taken. So we're in the same situation. So again, if, if the position is that critical, then again, there's other line items in the budget. If, if you feel that, that strongly, then just, the mechanism is to find a place to move.
Can you, can you point out any other line items in the budget that we can take it from?
The easiest one, take half a percent across the board of every line item, which no one's going to notice and use that to fund it. That's the question you want to take.
But that doesn't touch the long-term impact of adding that position. You have all the backend costs. It's not just the fifty-two thousand dollars, it's the pension contributions, it's the employee healthcare benefits, it's all of the three percent increases on an annual basis that, that, that position over time will cost you more than the five hundred thousand dollars that it would cost to implement a program that would automate. There's also the use of temporary labor during peak times. You know, we've outsourced the beach stickers, which was a large draw in that office. Those have been outsourced at a cost of three dollars and fifty cents a beach sticker for year, for several years that the town paid for outside of, of any revenue source. So there are all sorts of things that can be done to automate it and, and have been done. So we weren't convinced that this position needed to be funded and I think that it is short-sighted to look at it at just the fifty-two thousand dollars because that fifty-two thousand dollars spirals out of control very quickly as you add longevity bonuses, pension contributions, three percent raises.
Well, we're gonna, we're gonna, we're gonna stop that with the three percent raises, I can tell you that.
So I was hoping that we might be able to resolve it here at the table, but it seems as though some further discussions ought to take place and reconsiderations and such things. So I don't, I think tonight we ought to move on, but I'm glad we had to discuss it.
One thing, a question was asked twice and there hasn't been an answer yet. Did you guys talk to Kathy about this?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear you, Dan.
Did you, you asked, you asked whether they talked to Kathy and so did Mr. Lombard, but there was never an answer to that question and I think that's pretty crucial.
No.
No, our information on that position and the functionality of that office was via the town administrator in those discussions. We did not speak to the...
And we've been advised not to have direct conversations with the town employees.
There's a, there's a couple of factors here that, you know, I, I understand the, this budget is, is not much, it's not a big budget, okay? For the last few years, again, the Board of Selectmen have been put in positions where the town managers, we've had problems with town managers, serious problems. And we worked our way through that. And again, the Board of Selectmen were saying, this is the candidate, after that nine-member committee selected ex-town manager, and they said, this is the candidate we want. And a lot of them didn't work out. So we've had problems, you know, last four years. It's been, it's been, it's been just, you know, and so there's a lot of responsibility here. I mean, you haven't even discussed anything like here in, in the budget or any recommendation of mergers. Well, you know, you start looking with other communities, you know? Things like that. I mean, there's things that we need to look down the road because, you know, especially where us, where our personnel are getting smaller and smaller, and you keep cutting, you know, I mean, we're gonna lose a department. The individuals don't want to work for the town unhappy because they think, you know, they don't, there's no incentive to come over here because we're not paying them exorbitant salaries. These salaries we, we give them is right in line with their other communities as best we can, but it's usually a low, low end of the scale. Public Works, fire, even our police, okay? And on the police department, I was gonna ask for the twelfth man. He needs an extra man because I'm on live TV, but we, we've got problems next door to us, okay? And, and it's serious, serious and we can't afford to have one police officer in the cruiser by himself with what's going on in, in, in the country today. And there's one of those shifts that he's only got one officer out in the street and he should have two minimum for every shift. That position costs another hundred thousand dollars. I mean, that involves salary plus all your other benefits with it. That's a hundred thousand alone to get a, you know? And that's not a lot of money, okay? But we let that go this year. But down the road, it's gonna be, it's gonna be interesting to see where the police chief is, is going with this thing. Because that's why we didn't put it in and, and ask for the hundred thousand dollars for that twelfth man. So I want you aware, I mean, we're trying to do the best we can with what we have under the performing, performance of people that we're being forced, you know, a lot of times we're being, it's, it's, it's the deck scene. Now, but we, you know, you want to cut that, that position in the Treasurer Collector's office. I mean, that position is a key position. Who's gonna suffer, the townspeople? Is there be, you know, bills? It's the whole function of the Treasurer Collector tied in with the town accountant, okay? That has to be all together in one, one office, I feel, and it's going to be.
I'd like to call the question.
Okay, go ahead.
I noticed you didn't transfer the gavel down.
Oh, yeah, you can take it.
That's okay, that's all right. I, I just, no.
No, I, I want to get this out because I just want to get...
I understand and I think what you're saying is important, but I think we need to...
It's on the floor that they realize, you know, these are two key positions. I mean, I'm just, I think we're gonna have to fight like hell, I mean, we are with the townspeople because I don't want to, you know, when they call up in January, February, and we got a sewer break, a water break, I mean, you need people out there to fix that pipe. And when they come in to pay their bills and they, they can't, there's a line out the door because there's only one person, you know, I mean, it's, you know? We don't have any of this, I don't think there's any fat in these budgets, I really don't.
Then we might need an override to continue to, to fund the growth. I mean, that, that's what we're trying to avoid. Those are the options, is either grow the budget or grow the revenue and you can't do both. So, I mean, if we want to continue growing the budget, we're gonna have to look at an override.
Well, I, I don't think we can, we can...
Especially looking to pull a hundred and twenty-five, a hundred and fifty thousand of revenue out of the budget next year by selling the, the Coast Guard housing, you know, there's a hundred and fifty or a hundred and twenty-five thousand that we're not gonna have, so, you know...
That's up for discussion, that, that's...
Right, but, but, but that's an impact that you have to be thinking about that will exacerbate an issue that we already have even further.
That debate on the Coast Guard housing, you got a hundred and twenty-five thousand coming in every year. If we hold off, you know, and, you know, I mean, off we do sell. The, the tax benefit is gonna be like fifty thousand.
Right, so we're gonna be down seventy-five thousand a year.
Right, but...
In a very lean budget.
Well, okay, I won't get into that discussion now, but...
Wait till town meeting. Let's just move on.
So Article fourteen is to fund the water and sewer enterprise. It's a raise in appropriations, so it's a straight majority vote. Article fifteen is to appropriate from retained earnings the water and sewer enterprise fund amounts for equipment and paving. And again, that would be a straight majority vote. Article sixteen is to transfer funds to operate the rubbish enterprise fund. And it's an appropriation, not a borrowing, so it's a straight majority vote.
It's also a ballot because...
Ah. Yeah, okay. Good. All right, so that will be a ballot vote. And the omnibus article is a ballot vote. Okay, Article seventeen is raising appropriate ten thousand dollars for rubbish enterprise fund, so that's a majority vote. Article eighteen is to raise and appropriate or raised by borrowing highway construction and maintenance. So eighteen...
It's a majority.
Is a majority vote or raised by borrowing now?
It allows for, but what we're doing is we're accepting chapter ninety one.
Right, and that's what we usually do. So the motion is just to raise and appropriate. Okay, majority vote. Article nineteen is to appropriate eighty thousand dollars through borrowing, so that's a two-thirds majority vote. And this is for paving, roads and sidewalks. Article twenty, and I'm assuming that we're, that we see no major issues in connection with these particular ones, they seem to be pretty difficult. Article twenty is to increase the amount of property tax abatement from a thousand dollars to fifteen hundred dollars for senior citizens working under chapter fifty-nine, section five K.
So this is the tax workup program?
Mm-hmm. So that's a majority and that's under the chapter fifty-nine, so it's a majority vote. Okay, Article twenty-one is to amend bylaw renewing licenses and permits. So it's a bylaw amendment, it's a straight majority vote. What is this for?
It's actually a bylaw amendment, it's a two-thirds vote. This is the change that's brought about because of the Modernization Act and what it allows for is our bylaws currently state that the Treasurer Collector has to wait twelve months before placing somebody on a delinquent list.
Mm-hmm.
And so the Modernization Act identified that that could be deleted and the action could occur immediately. It doesn't mean that the town will do that, they'll use prudent measures, but it at least restrict, it removes the restriction for the twelve-month wait.
And does the statute say it's a majority vote or a two-thirds vote?
Well, because it's a bylaw amendment. Somebody can take a look at that just to confirm.
Dan, yeah, let me take a look. By law amendment was, unless it's a zoning bylaw, it's a straight majority.
We have a similar situation in Article thirty-five.
Zoning bylaws, two-thirds.
Thirty-five and thirty-six, yeah, thirty-six is a bylaw amendment.
Yeah, that's a two-thirds, but I think a regular bylaw is a straight majority. Dan, could you take a peek at that?
I certainly can, I'll get back to you guys.
We'll, we'll take that as a majority unless you come up with something else. I put majority question mark.
Okay, there you go.
That's my, if I can just recognize... That's my, if I can just recognize my handwriting. I'll figure that out in a little time. Article twenty-two is to continue a revolving account for council on aging fees. And that I think is also a straight majority. They've been doing a wonderful job with the Council on Aging, I have to say.
They certainly have.
I'm doing the aging part and they're doing the rest of it.
They're all racing to that end.
All right, Article twenty-three is to revolving, is continue the revolving account for the cemetery. That's a majority vote. I'm not gonna comment on that. And Article twenty-four is to continue revolving account for the recreation, and that's a straight majority vote as well. Okay, Article twenty-five is to replace the heating system in the Police Department at a cost of forty-six grand, and it's by borrowing. Appropriate in the article, in borrowing in the motion?
It, it keeps our options open. This is the four, sets the four corners, and this specifies within the four corners. The motion does.
Okay, two-thirds. Article twenty-six, appropriate a hundred and six to fifty, or borrow it as specified in the motion, so that would be a two-thirds as well. Article twenty, and the hundred and six is for two pickup trucks and appropriate fixtures. And Article twenty-seven, it's a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars for drainage improvements to Ward Road and Bear Pond. So that would be by borrowing, and that will also be two-thirds. Article twenty-eight is to raise by borrowing and appropriate two hundred and eighty thousand dollars for the improvements to the sewer pumping station. So that would be a two-thirds. Article twenty-nine is to deposit sixty-five hundred dollars into the stabilization fund. Is there any place where that's supposed to come from? Is it appropriation? I assume this is appropriation.
This is, it's, it's just an appropriation, yes. It's, it's not a borrowing, so it's a majority vote.
Change the motion to appropriate and deposit. Majority. Article thirty, to accept Chapter thirty-two B, Section twenty, that deals with, uh, post-employment Establishing a fund to hold assets solely to meet the current and future liabilities of the town for group health insurance, so that's a straight majority vote. Article thirty-one is to deposit into the other post-employment benefits trust fund, the amount of thirty-three hundred dollars. That's an appropriation, I guess. And that's a majority vote. All right, Article, um, thirty-two is the Forty Steps... Thank you very much. You sounded great.
That's how to kiss up, huh?
Work through this. I hope this is vodka.
Yes.
Thanks, Dean.
You're welcome, sir.
So, um, Forty Steps Revetment Project. And this is by borrowing a hundred and thirty-eight thousand, seven hundred dollars to fund improvements to the revetment of Forty Steps. That's partially as a result of that accident, I take it?
No, this is actually a project that had come forward before that. Um, there was no damage to the actual revetment itself, um, and this is a state grant, or a MEMA grant, I should say, for seventy-five percent of the funds being covered. The sum you just mentioned there is the twenty-five percent of the town.
Okay. That's a borrowing, so it's two-thirds majority.
A question on this motion. Does, does this restrict the borrowing to the general fund, or does it allow the town to borrow it either out of the general fund or the Water and Sewer Enterprise fund?
It allows either, although we've placed in the title "General Fund." Brendan, you and I should probably walk through some of these, uh, and, and just get your comments. These are not what I consider to be a final set of motions. Um, I'm hoping to finalize these by Tuesday, so you can, you can, okay, take a look at that.
I think it'd be good to have...
Well, the Finance Committee's recommendation was that it only, that it be limited specifically to the general fund, and given that they're, the Finance Committee's motions, I would suggest that it, the language prohibited from being borrowed out of the Water and Sewer Enterprise Fund, and obviously if the motion fails, someone else can make a motion for any account to borrow it out of, obviously, but...
But is, is this borrowing town money out of an account, or is this borrowing to fund something?
To fund something, but there was a proposal to...
But be funded through that account?
To fund it through the Water and Sewer Enterprise Fund as opposed to the general fund. And the Finance Committee recommended it subject to it only coming from the general fund and not out of the Water and Sewer Enterprise Fund.
So you borrow it, then it goes into the general fund, and then you expend it?
Correct.
That's easily done. Let me modify that and get you the device working.
Now we get to Article thirty-three. A, B, C, D, E, F, G, H, I, J, K, L, M, N, O, Q, R, S. Wow. These are the expenditure of community presid, preservation funds that are already at hand.
It's a combination of issues. Um, through the revenues received this year, they're depositing into certain reserve funds, and then they're also pulling back some funds that are, have unused portions of funding, and then, and then also distributing new things.
Right, but there's no town borrowing, borrowing anything.
No.
So these would all be a straight... And, uh, so rather than, uh, take the board's time to go through each one, uh, why don't we just see if we can center on any of them that seem to have some controversial nature to them? Do you, are there any hidden gems in here that we should be concerned around?
Arrow, do you have any input on that one?
There was some discussion on Facebook regarding, uh, Article thirty-three Q, so if anywhere to have any legs, it would, I suggest be that one.
So thirty-three Q is, I recommend the town appropriate twenty thousand, six hundred and fifty dollars as fifty percent matching funds from the fiscal year twenty-eighteen Community Preservation Fund revenues for the following project: Open Space Creation. This is, uh, property purchase and demolition of the structure at twenty-five Furbish Road. The assessment and remediation of hazardous materials and site restoration by the Nahand Preservation Trust, as applied for by the Nahand Preservation Trust. So that's that, uh, small house at, uh, the, uh, eastern end of Furbish Road that's been taken for many years, and it's just getting...
More and more.
So you think there may be some issues as to whether or not this would go forward?
I don't know that to be true or false. It's the only one I've heard anyone talking about. We fully supported recommending the article, um, but I have heard people complaining about it.
So there was the gentleman who actually came to one of the board meetings asking about this, and I believe he stated at that time that he would argue against this at town meeting.
Yes, I remember. I don't remember his name now, but...
Mr. Bianchi?
Mr. Bianchi, yeah, okay.
But why? Why would he argue against?
I can't begin to...
We're not sure.
But decipher why someone would argue against something or not.
Does the town now own the property?
Yeah, the deed is in the back of the book. Or no, we don't own it any longer.
Yeah, we don't own it anymore. It was a tax title taking, uh, and it was sold by auction, and it was purchased by Nahand Preservation Trust. And the, um, request that's coming forward under R is to, uh, being brought forward by Nahand Preservation Trust and SWIM.
Q. His deed is open space, and they have a, an obligation to, um, make it open space. They have to rip the house down. That was part of the deal. So they, and they have to get rid of the, what's there, and just leave it as it, as it is.
Hey, Kathy, you're right. It was key, not R. Sorry about that.
And we included the deed showing the restrictions, that it be preserved as open space as an addendum, so that, so people could actually see the recording.
So, uh, if you go by the house, you look in the windows, and there's little bottles of things sitting on the windows. It's as if it was, uh, still people there, but, uh, I don't think that's very much hazardous information, but is there anything known Okay, well, that'll be interesting. We'll wait to hear from the town and from Mr. Bianchi.
And there's been some, some grumbling on my end, uh, near me, on the life-saving station, a design that's gonna cost ten thousand dollars, just to throw it out.
So...
That's all I know.
Let me ask a question about that. So let's say that that passes, and somebody goes over and, uh, and studies it for a good day or two, and determines that the deed could be fulfilled by an expenditure of two-three thousand dollars. Would that be something that the selectmen would consider to be covered by something that was, uh, awarded for assessment? To fund a comprehensive building assessment for each of the town hall? Oh, no, that's a run.
It's just the assessment.
Yeah, this is...
This is a study.
R, thirty-three R.
I'm not sure it falls under their...
It's a rich...
The Community Preservation Committee's purview.
Right, let me, let me ask a question on that one. I'm hearing it's just, it's supposed to be just a gutter system?
No.
Yeah.
It's, it's the...
Carthage.
You can do this, go.
Right.
So I just came forward originally from the, um, from the veterans.
Yep.
From the veterans with a need, and as we studied it, uh, clearly beyond what they thought might be necessary, uh, there needs to be a more permanent solution than drain guards and gutters and so forth to protect that rear entry from the elements. Uh, something structural, we suspect, of the roof will be the outcome.
Well, but the question is, my question is, if someone had studied it and found that it could be, studied it for two thousand dollars worth of metal effort, and then found that it could be resolved for five thousand, is that something that you think would be funded by this article as it's worded?
No, because, uh, the, the outcome of this is a deliverable. Drawings that have to pass the Massachusetts Historical Commission and maybe some other board as well. So there's a fairly sophisticated set of drawings that come out of this.
The expectation is just because of the way it's structured, and I figured if the diagrams in there, it's a complicated area with the EUs and just the way the building is, so it's not as simple as just putting up and on it. So the discussion was that there's, it, it would be fairly complicated and costly to do something that meets the historical standards and ADA requirements, et cetera. Um, so it would be far more than ten thousand to actually construct something. Uh, the intent, I believe, was just to at least look at it, answer the question. If it's not feasible, then... But I think it's unlikely. The assumption was it was un... Well, the assumption was that the answer to your question is no, because it wouldn't just be at two or three thousand dollars.
And the exposure is a fairly extreme exposure there.
It's just, it's odd to me that it just says "only" to study in case something's left over. It seems like you might wanna take that money and apply it to getting to fixing the place.
We're not...
It's odd the way it was reworded, and I, I...
And it includes the approval by the...
I heard through the grapevine, uh, with whom I live, that, uh, they, there was a discussion at the Preservation Trust meeting last week, and they said, well, they were gonna change the wording to, as presented at Town Hall, and I see it's not changed. I just wondered about it, that's all.
Yeah, that answered my question. Cause all I'm hearing is that they, they wanna put a gutter up for ten thousand dollars. So, you know, that, that answered my question. So it's pretty sophisticated, you know?
And it requires the professional services to go to the commissions that monitor that building, being historical, and other commissions that have purview over that historical building. So there's significant, as was explained to us, significant cost associated with that as a, uh, professional that may...
Have you gotten an estimate of what it would take to study?
The, I believe the Community Preservation Commission, Committee to...
Excuse me.
Okay. Enough said. Okay, so then, um...
We could possibly send down one of our consultants, engineers from the Public Works that we've hired, send them down to look at it. The American Legion's been looking at this for fifteen months, and they've asked it. Nothing's been done. And this is right over the handicap access to the building, and it's just, uh, it's been an awful problem. It's been, it's been ongoing, and they keep asking, asking, you know, the, the, um, people that leased the building to the Legion, nothing's been done. We have a consultant. We hired an engineer, correct? We should send him down and take a look at this thing, cause I don't think it's a big thing. I think, yes, I think the, the building, the historical building, it needs to be looked at, but I don't, you know, ten thousand dollars, I think we, if we could have one of our, my finance consultants that we hired, engineer, take a look at that and see what he comes, come up with, and maybe investigate on the historical side too, exactly what would pass. You know, ten thousand dollars, I, I just, you know, I've seen the problem firsthand. I've seen the water pouring down. It's just, it's the major entrance to the building, and it just, it just, people, when it rains, soaked.
Well, and the winters, it was worse.
And the winter's worse.
So, but there's not been a motion or any thought of changing from study to study and... Is that right? Okie doke. Well, uh, so, then we will hear the report of the committee. We will go ahead and do the, uh, the votes, all of which are... All of which are, uh, state majority vote. And we will go on Article thirty-four. End of the motions, which is to continue committees, which includes the Coast Guard Housing Committee, among others, and that's a straight majority vote.
Sure you can. If the town meeting votes to give the Board of Selectmen the authority to afford telling the individual the spots, and you have in that warrant article, continuation of the Coast Guard Committee, there seems to be a dichotomy, a disconnect there. Am I correct in that assumption or not?
That is beyond my ken, Dan. I, this, I am merely a procedural nitpicker, and the actual intent of any of these things, I'm not familiar. So that would be something that should be answered, I suppose, by the town administrator or the Board of Selectmen. or the Board of Selectmen.
Well, that's, that's why I asked, um, a couple of weeks ago, I called you, Dan, and asked you if, if the 2005 vote would be part of the, actually I asked Jeff if it would be rescinded along with the 2008 vote. And that's what I was told, that if we wiped out the 2008 vote, it takes care of the 2005 vote. So now I'm getting conflicting stories. Um, we need to look, take a look at that too. We'll take a look at that.
Could you not just make a motion to just strike that line from the list of committees?
Sure, we could.
I think we still, no, I, I disagree. I still think we need the Coast Guard Housing Committee, even after the fact. If the selectmen prevail, or whoever prevails on this, this change, uh, you're still going to need the Coast Guard Housing to come up with a plan because the plan, there's no plans. Even if, you know, there is no plan.
So how do we appoint the committee, Richie?
Well, again.
Who's going to appoint the committee?
We're going to have to discuss that.
What is the 2005 vote?
Well, you're, but I, I keep the committee in place. Uh, the committee, you're working on step four or five. We need to get over step one. Okay? And then the plan has to be developed exactly who, well, how's it going to be sold and who's going to get it? And, I mean, there's, there's a lot to this whole thing. It's just not something, but there's got to be a plan. If we have no plan, it's going to take us, and I believe we'd probably have to come back at a special town meeting in the fall, um, to present the plan.
Which is what we recommended, that we definitely postpone this vote, that the plan be developed and there be a special town meeting in the fall.
Well, you recommended that, but it, but you didn't recommend to go to, to sell the units because, you know, the board felt that we'd been going through this for a long time.
The, the article doesn't say that, actually. The Article 10 that you're referring to just says, give the authority, the Board of Selectmen the authority to dispose of the properties, period.
We can go back and forth on this, Ken. A million times, but the last meeting we had with the, the committee, okay? I have the video. Mr. Schneider, I had asked the question, are we going to continue with the same plan? Which was the one that was presented at the overlay meeting and that was the same plan that we had back in 2008. And he said, yes, we are. I said, have you talked to any other architects? No, we haven't. We felt as though that, that plan was a good plan. I went to one of you, one of the meetings and I was told by an architect that the reason why we didn't get any bids was because it was too expensive to build.
Understood.
So the, the understanding is I want a, I want a fresh start. I want a new committee. Okay? I don't want to have the old, same old thing. I want, I want to get it going. Okay? And I don't want to wait for a special town meeting, uh, uh, eighteen months from now because if we do, if the market tanks, then what do we do?
So, so to constitute a different Coast Guard Housing Commission Committee, what would be the mech, is this the mechanism?
And that's what I asked. And, and I was told that if the 2008 vote will rescind the 2005 vote, and again, I'll say it again, I'm getting conflicting information. So I'm not comfortable with it. If I may, I, I gladly answer that. My motion from October 6th, Dan, was in fact that the Board of Selectmen, the town authorize us to start the process of selling these as individual units. The process will be that the town lets us do that. Then we will get together, the three selectmen, and we will probably appoint a committee. We will probably do a lot of things, but I'm not going to talk about it now until we get the process to do it. It's kind of simple for me.
The article doesn't say that.
We didn't write that article. My article was written, I have it ten times. Somebody put the word dispose in. Okay?
I don't know.
So can we, we can amend that, that, that? And we can amend that. I'm not going to go out on a limb. If I presented, I'll tell you one thing, Dan. If I presented nine things to the Finance Committee on a plan, it wouldn't be enough. It wouldn't be enough. I know that. I know that. I've been here all my life. I know that. There's a lot going on here. I want the town to come up to vote for us to do it and then we will take it and begin with a plan, a big plan after we get permission to start the process. It's kind of simple and it's going to be done in an open meeting, open session with all of the town being able to come up here. No 2008 again. We're going to sell them. It's kind of that simple. And that's, that's to answer your question. So there's nothing etched in stone yet because we're going to get permission to do the process first. And that's going to happen, town meeting. Thank you. And there won't be any special town meeting after this. If Mr. Lombard wants that, that's one thing. That'll be up for a vote for the, for us three. We're going to get this done, maybe, probably appoint a committee and get it done. Thank you.
So it would be the best interest of the Board of Selectmen, save for instance, we, we win the proposal. The plan has to be developed and, uh, who's going to be on that committee is another question. In the past, you know, you've taken a member of Finance Committee, Financing Board, space, I mean, things like that to, to put that committee together and some, and some Nahant residents that are interested up there. So that, that plan has to be worked out and we, 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 we don't have a plan to, you know, we have.
There's no fundamental, there's nothing.
That's what I'm saying and we have to.
But, but, but Ken, in all fairness to us, in 2005, this was the same vote. The vote was to establish a committee to look at, let me finish, to come up with a plan to sell, either sell them as 12 units, to sell them as a development or, and I forget what the third option, I think the third option was to rip them down, what I had written on the survey. So this is pretty much what we're doing. We sent out a survey. You can knock it if you want, that's fine, but whatever. It came back, it came back and I see what you wrote in the book. Three or four of those, three or four of those sheets came with a couple of questions. Most of them came back with a stack came back. I, I saw the writing on them. I read every single one of them. Okay?
Well, some of those people wrote two-page letters.
Some. Four, I, I'm going to say 450 of them said, just sell them, 12 individual units. Okay? So I, if, I'm going to bring them, I'm going to bring them to the town meeting and people can go through them, they can do what they want with them.
If the town.
And, and that because it's.
Our contention is not, whether you want to sell them as individual units or not, if that's the right thing to do or not, all the article says.
Yep.
Article 10 is that you three have the right to dispose of them, period. It doesn't say anything about a committee, a plan, financials, anything.
And we, and we can amend that to have.
Well, then ideally it would.
Well, then I, I suggest then we should put that into it now. Why? We're asking the town. Huh? I'm asking the town to come up here to support us.
In, in doing what?
Setting up a process. You don't understand the process?
That's not what you're asking.
You don't understand the process? Of course you do.
But that's not what the article says.
What says dispose of?
Dispose was not my motion and I'll go back at the minute.
Well, that's the article that we have on it.
That's what's in it. So I think, I think if we clarify it now, we can come to some kind of an agreement.
Well, just remember that you can't just willy-nilly amend warrant articles.
No, not till the floor.
On or at the floor. Uh, we have a question from.
Yeah, my, my question is, I'm sorry.
You can't talk like that.
All right, we go. Uh, only to my wife. Um, my, my question is, if the article were to pass and people were to say, yeah, we want to go in a different direction, it's to pass, would the selectmen have the legal ability to just simply sell it in any way they chose, although they disclaim that that's what they would do? I doubt that they would. But would they have the legal authority if that's what they wanted? If left it the way it is?
Well, the, the term dispose seems to be baffled about here. That's a term of art in the Procurement Act and the Procurement Act 48 sets out a process that you have to follow to dispose of public property. Um, so we're bound by that process.
Which requires?
Advertising, um, in the national, and then register and whatnot and getting the best pricing.
Okay, so would they have, so the answer is yes, they would have the authority if they comply with the act to sell it without a committee and without further evaluation?
Based on the wording of that vote or that warrant in the motion, I believe so. But I think, I think this warrant in the motion was meant to promote discussion.
Okay, I, I, I'm for good and against evil in all its manifest forms. I know what everybody intends. I think, I, and I'm not taking a substantive position, I'm just simply saying if somebody asks a question, can they do it? The, it says, yes, they can. And so that's the question you, only question you can answer unless it gets amended before the discussion starts. So that's my only point.
So can we clarify it? Is it possible to clarify it now or do we have to keep that same motion?
The motion is to indefinitely postpone, so it has to.
No, I'm talking about the.
Somebody has to have a subsequent.
What I'm asking the article, where the article is read.
Can you change the article?
Can we change the article to, to read something? Can we come to some sort of an agreement?
Can you do an amendment between, would the order be indefinitely postponed, amend, then vote on the amendment? Or can you propose an amendment before any vote on the article is written?
Well, no, what he's saying is he wants to change the wording of the warrants and.
That you can't do that.
Okay, so we can't change, we can't change the article and the warrant.
That's already gone out to the public.
All right, I'm just saying that that's what he's saying.
And we're not, we had no intentions of disposing of it in the way that some people might think we, we do. I think we, what Tia said and what I, what I've always maintained is I want to have a committee look at it and say, this is what we're going to do.
If the selectmen's position is that, that, the, the language of this article should have been different, it just came out, for some reason it was typed up in a different way than what your expectation was.
Yep.
When you're on the floor or at the day of the, 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 um, meeting, can, when this article comes up, can, can the selectmen go up and say, we want to amend this before it goes out to vote or, or say, take it back? I mean, what?
Let me explain what.
Okay.
So they can propose a motion that's consistent with the article as it was published. The whole reason for a warrant is to give people warning as to what the nature of what's going to be discussed at the meeting. So you can, you can word motions that they don't have to be identical to the warrant itself. So what could happen is you could propose a motion.
Mm-hmm.
That would be, that would be consistent with the wa, with the warrant and would not be inconsistent with the warrant. So people would be, have a fair understanding that this is within the realm of what will be discussed at the meeting.
Okay.
And you could consider that and decide whether or not you want to make, uh, your motion to indefinitely postpone or not. If there's no agreement and they have made their motion to indefinitely postpone, so then that, at the, at the meeting, the motion to indefinitely postpone would be taken up first. If that's defeated, then you would have a chance to put your motion.
Okay.
But you might want to try and word something that would seem to be, uh, you know, find acceptance in the FENCOM beforehand. And that way you might be able to avert a fight at town meeting, which is the best to do if we can. Yes, sir?
Dan, I have a question.
Okay.
The current Coast Guard Housing Committee, what's the status of them? Are they, are they all done?
Well, this is what Enzo and I spoke about. When it was created in 2005, it was not given a specific lifespan, five, 10 years. It was given a purpose and a, and a goal. Um, to the extent we consider the last special time meeting a failure of that goal, their purpose is now distinguished, or I'm sorry, extinguished, sorry, extinguished. So as I told Enzo before, to disband that community, uh, committee, all we need to do is take it off Article 34. It no longer exists, uh, but I realize there's some pushback in that.
But that Coast Guard Housing has been on every town meeting.
Cause it has to be renewed every year.
Every new.
Yeah.
So, but, so we're going to need a committee, am I correct?
Yeah. Well, that's, that's the decision you have to make.
Right, I mean, we're, we're, we're going to need.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Yeah, I would say they stay there.
The committee might be. But I mean, the members of the committee, I mean, I, I, that's where I'm, I'm, you know, this is where the.
Does any vote prescribe the makeup of the committee? I know that it's sometimes in the, in the bylaws and in the vote itself, it says exactly how the committee needs to be.
We have it somewhere, it's, it's.
So that wouldn't change.
That committee, the committee is made up of.
No, it would not change.
FENCOM, which was P Kathy.
FENCOM, plenty of, so that's, that committee's, okay, so that's being, we still have to go be, be governed by that.
By 2005 vote?
If we, if we continue this committee, which we're going to leave it in.
Right.
We're going to be governed.
By the 2005, by the 2005 vote.
Yes, right. That's, that's where things got a little convoluted with me and I, I, you know, that's because I thought that it was going to change things a little bit so that, like you said, you know, um, we should change it, you know, change the committee possibly, or Dan had mentioned that.
That's.
I think we need change.
That was the night we had the meeting where the Coast Guard Housing Article 10 was actually after that and we, I said, no, we should move it to the front and then we should keep them in case we need them.
Yeah. Well, we need a committee, that's for sure. How we're going to do it, I don't know. I mean, how, if we continue?
If you continue the committee as it was constituted in 2005 by this Article 34, does that, do, do the selectmen have the ability to change the members?
That's a good question. I have to go look at, at that 2005, uh, vote to see how it's supposed to be constituted. But, um, uh, yeah, so I have to look back at the vote to see what the makeup is supposed to be, but they, we do have the ability to create a whole new, a whole new committee.
Absolutely. I think we get to, the moderator picks all of them.
I don't think so. I think, I think the FENCOM sent somebody and I, I don't remember.
Point their approval though, and if the selectmen get to get two and, and you, you, you get to appoint the rest of them.
So, so I think it's just important to understand that there are, um, origins of some of these positions from various boards and committees and that there is a selection process. So within that, what you can do is empty out the positions and then refill them within those parameters and, and so that works.
Right, well, that's what you just said. You wanted to confirm that, right?
Right, I have to do it back in the vote, but that, that sounds like an appropriate process. One, one of two ways of getting it done.
Right.
We're going to.
All right, well, let, let.
We're going to have to answer questions though concerning if the vote gets approved, that motion gets approved.
And Enzo, to your point, what we can do is, uh, we can work on a motion that stays within the dispose of, um, four corners or the, the intent. And as Dan was saying, dispose of doesn't mean that, you know, get rid of. It just means the process of procuring to move it forward. So I think there's lots of latitude.
I'm just thinking that that is a twist you'll never sell.
Oh, no, I'm just saying that if, if we were staying, trying to stay.
I'm not against, I'm not talking about the substance. I'm just talking about putting it on the table and if you tell somebody that they're urinating on their leg, but it's raining, uh, it doesn't work. People know that.
Helmet.
And all I'm saying, all I'm saying, Richard.
You're doing both at the same time.
All I'm saying, Richard, is we can work on a motion that stays within those four corners.
We can, we can, I think we can try to work it out with the, with the Finance Committee.
Could we, I mean, in, as part of our discussion, we had actually considered, considered taking a path of offering an amendment to, to the article as written that would basically do what you said. Would you be okay if I share, if we share that? It, it just adds on a line that says we'll do X, Y, Z.
Yeah.
And just, I, I mean, our whole issue with the thing is that it's completely open-ended.
So let's work on that, all right?
Yeah.
Before Saturday.
Yeah, I'd rather Brendan's the chairman, I'd rather we not have a 17-hour.
Yeah, no, I don't need it.
That doesn't resolve, that doesn't resolve the question anyway.
And I've relayed, both, you know, the finances committee, the Finance Committee's positioned to both, two of the three selectmen and that has been the, the message all along is that our, our position was based on the fact that there was zero plan and that it was giving the Board of Selectmen carte blanche authority pursuant to what town council has said to dispose of in, in any manner they saw fit. And that's the problem that we had with.
But you know that we're not going to. Which we have.
What the question I have is, okay, two thousand and five and two thousand and eight, we vote on that, and the vote comes back affirmative. That's the end of those projects, as written, two thousand and eight especially. Right now, two thousand and eight stands on the books as a.
Until.
Until we, we, we vote on that. If that fails, if that fails, say the two thousand and eight.
Then there is no Article ten.
And then?
Article ten is moot if, if the other article fails.
Cause we're obligated to sell it to a defunct company.
Right.
But it, but it failed because of its contractual inability to move on.
No, I understand what you're saying, if the, if the article to rescind the two thousand and eight vote fails, then the article two thousand and eight, the two thousand and eight vote stands, which means, but that's not, that's not our intention either.
But there is no two thousand and eight cause it failed, right?
No, it's still there, we're trying to rescind it. He's saying if the vote to rescind it fails.
Why would it be moot that we want to sell it?
Cause you can't, cause the town meeting has already said that they're to be sold to the developer in two thou, as the vote in two thousand and eight says.
That two thousand and eight vote gets reiterated?
It doesn't get killed.
It's still there.
It's alive, Article nine is gonna rescind it.
It's alive, it's alive, but if that fails, that, that two thousand and eight vote is on the books.
Correct.
It's alive, and it's alive.
But, but Dan, but Dan, wouldn't that be moot if it was dependent upon the execution of a contract? The contract can't be executed?
Repeat the question?
Uh, if, what, what, what we're talking about is, uh, the two thousand and eight vote, um, if the vote to rescind it fails.
Right.
Then does it stay alive?
It does stay alive.
And does it have an effect? Because the, the vote was specific that what the town was doing is selling it under a contract. If the contract is not contractually viable, then.
It has effect, but it seems to be without, without merit, because the town's already voted to not do that. So it's, it doesn't make much sense for them to, the townspeople to not rescind the vote, that doesn't make a lot of sense.
Essentially, the, the, the committee would have to go back to work on development.
True, yeah, with the, but.
Does it open us up to litigation from abutters if they wanted to object to something? If that vote was still in the books, and we move forward to sell the twelve units, and abutters wanted to sue the town to stop the sale? Are we, is there any liability for the town there based on that two thousand and eight vote?
It's a big question for a quick answer. Uh, I, I don't see that happening, um, or I don't see that viable, put it that way.
I wish we had those in front of us, but.
Two thou, the, the two thousand and eight.
Vote?
I've got the two thousand and five now, who points what?
The two thousand and eight.
Really?
You get the two thousand and eight?
I have two thousand and five, I thought we were talking, I can go get two thousand and eight's vote.
I think he's got it.
I got it too.
Once we, once.
But it's different from what two thousand and five originally.
We have to prepare ourselves. Someone's gonna ask questions.
Which was, which was the point we were trying to make.
No, 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 the questions are asked to the board of selectmen, what's your intent, what's your plan? I mean, we're gonna sell the twelve units, but how are you gonna sell those?
Okay, well.
That's the actual.
Well, Chase, here's.
You know, that, I mean, the, the, once step one's approved.
Yeah, but you don't really know for sure yet, because that's the idea.
Well, that's like, that's like step three and four.
Right, right.
Step one has to be appro, you know, the, you know, passed, and then people are gonna ask questions, well, how?
That's two thousand and eight.
How are we gonna do it? Is that what you wanna know? Okay, so how, again, I'll say it again, two thousand and five, it's, it's no different than the two thousand and five vote, that said to form a committee, to look, to, to come up with a plan, and how we're gonna do it. And that's exactly what they did, they, they got a committee together, and they, they come up with that, the plan that, um, the conceptual drawings, and that's what they did, and that's ex, exactly what we're trying to do.
Yeah, but the committee, once we, once we approve this article for the extension of the committees, that housing committee, Coast Guard Housing, is still alive, is still effective.
But I'm confused on the two thousand and five vote. Was the vote to actually approve, cause the way it was represented to me was that there were three plans presented, and the town meeting voted on the plan that we had.
Yes, yes.
That vote is still on the books.
On, on, on two thousand and five.
Correct, so we still have, the town meeting vote is to sell it as a development with single-family homes and a multi-family unit.
Yes.
Which we're not rescinding, so that two thousand and five vote is still on the books.
That's two thousand and eight.
That's two thousand and eight, two thousand and five was just to form the committee.
Let me, uh, let me carry the error on that.
Two thousand and eight was an option, and the option.
Then there was a second two thousand and eight vote with the development there?
Yes.
So we have two votes in two thousand and eight that we're rescinding?
And the bids were, and, and the bid was awarded, on, on Brendan, that, that, that went out to contract.
Correct.
And it was awarded.
But which of those votes are we rescinding?
Right.
I thought we were rescinding the vote on the contract itself, on the plan.
I think once two thousand and eight came, came, uh, uh, alive, two thousand and five was, it just met, uh.
That was just to form the committee, two thousand and five was to form the committee, it came to two thousand and eight, two thousand and eight they came up with a plan. It's pretty simple, cut and dry, they, here's, here's the plan right here, and I was only off by six votes. It's two oh, it's one hundred and sixty-six yes and forty no. To be authorized to sell, convey, and or transfer approximately one hundred and fifty thousand square feet of town-owned land, commonly known as the Coast Guard Housing, to Bass Point Residence LLC in the amount of not less than two million, two hundred and, uh, sixty, uh, two dollars, and it was to a developer, and that developer.
Was this a special town meeting?
No. Uh, yes, it was, special town meeting, I'm sorry.
Okay, so the article that we're rescinding, which is from the, from the town meeting, is actually the, not the article you want to rescind.
Right, you're rescinding the wrong article.
In the regular, in the regular two thousand and eight town meeting.
Yeah.
There's an article that said, Panon, uh, to see if the town will accept, vote to accept the recommendation of the Military Housing Committee to authorize the Board of Selectmen to proceed by issuing a request for development proposal or take any other action relative thereto. That was voted unanimously, that was the original town meeting, that's the article that this is asking to rescind.
That's the one we're rescinding. This one, the special town meeting was to, to, to sell it.
Number ten.
Was to authorize the Board of Selectmen to sell it to Bass Point.
So they're rescinding the wrong vote, which is what we've been telling you.
No, wait a minute, this, this one here, the special town meeting was to authorize the Board of Selectmen to sell it to Bass Point Residence LLC.
Correct, that's what's in the, that's what you're trying to rescind, but it, that's, the annual town meeting of that year was when the plan was developed that was voted on by the town, then it went out to bid, and then you voted, you had a special town meeting to sell it to that developer. The April two thousand and eight town meeting vote is still on the books and is not being rescinded. And that was the one to develop the plan, to create the RFPs that the developers responded to. So we still have a vote of town meeting that our plan is to have a multi-unit dwelling with the single-family unit dwellings as of the April two thousand and eight town meeting, and you're only rescinding the November two thousand and eight special town meeting vote.
Where does it say that in the article?
It doesn't.
It, it cites the, the vote you're rescinding in, in the warrant article.
This is the specific vote that we were.
Right, the November tenth, two thousand and eight vote by one sixty-six yes, which is a different vote than the one in April of two thousand and eight that created the plan, which is still on the books. So our, I, I think our only option is to follow the two thousand, April two thousand and eight plan, until that's rescinded.
So you wanna continue, so you wanna continue on with the development?
No, I'm saying we've rescinded the wrong vote.
Okay, so we'll, we'll continue on with the, the, the development?
That's not what we're saying.
That's not all we're saying.
Okay, so then, how do we want to correct it?
I think it, it sounds like it might be tough, cause you have to change, well, the intent here was to rescind the prior disposal of the.
And we're not doing it with that, with that motion that's in there.
That motion.
That warrant article.
That warrant article will not cover.
Correct.
The original vote.
Correct.
Right.
It covers the award of the contract.
Correct.
Yeah, I, you know, see, that's, that's, that's the whole, that has to be spelled out in the original article, I don't know if you can, can we amend this, uh?
Well, let's take a look at it and see what flexible we do.
Well, I mean.
This is a conversation that we had when you came to our finance committee about the warrant articles.
Well, no, we talked about, I don't remember you saying about anything about a special town meeting. I remember we talked about the two thousand and five vote, and I remember being told that it's possible that we'll get sued by, um, some of the neighbors, and that, which kind of upset me, you know?
So, I mean, did, can, is it possible to have ready a, an am, an am, yeah, an amendment to the current Article ten that adds both of these old articles, that rescinds both of those old articles, or is that beyond?
I think we're gonna need a, kind of, maybe Dan and I get our heads together on that.
And I want to rescind, and rescind the two thousand and five vote also.
Why can't we have a motion to develop a plan to sell the twelve individual units and come back? Limited to, add, and, add to the, the current warrant article, which would still be in keeping with what it says there, to, to sell them as twelve individual units, but to expand upon it by developing a committee that would look at, you know, some of the major factors such as zoning, sales process, you know, maybe come up with four or five global themes that this committee could look at, set a deadline for them, and have it come back. And then, we know we need to, we now know we need to rescind a different vote, we would have to include that and have a special town meeting to incorporate the plan and rescind the vote that we aren't properly rescinding.
So when do you, when do you suspect we should have the special town meeting?
How long would it take? I, I, I haven't worked on a committee like that, I don't know what, how aggressive a timeframe we could give them, but could they do it in six months?
Well, you guys had mentioned eighteen months.
No, no, he mentioned eighteen months.
Who?
He said.
We said six, we were looking for October.
I was actually looking for September nineteenth, but.
I, somewhere along the line, eighteen months came up, I think it was maybe Perry?
Who said eighteen months?
You said eighteen months earlier in this meeting. Yes, you did.
Did I take it?
We'll rewind the video, yes, you did. We're not saying eighteen months, we're talking about three or four, or five, it shouldn't take six months, honestly.
I thought you had said that it took two or three or four weeks, that's what I read yesterday.
Took a couple of years to get the ultimate foundation to the, of the Military Housing Committee.
Well, that's, you see, that's, that's the problem, Dave, because when that happened, the market tanked, and that was the excuse they used that why they, they bailed out. I mean, I don't wanna wait, I don't wanna wait eighteen months, I don't wanna wait six, uh, a year, I wanna get it done as soon as possible.
I understand that.
Um, and this is definitely, you know, and I, I thought we were talking about the two thousand and five vote, cause that's what was brought up. We, somehow that came up at the two, and these.
That's a question because.
Let me, let me read the two thousand and.
And then the two thousand and eight vote, I didn't realize that, you know, there was two votes in two thousand and eight.
Here is the two thousand and five vote. On motion duly seconded, it was unanimous and voted in favor to establish a committee to be known as the Coast Guard Housing Design and Development Advisory Committee to advise the Board of Selectmen with the implementing a development plan and process for the reuse of the above referenced property. Committee should consist of two members selected from the Board of Assessors, certified abutters list, and appointed by the Board of Selectmen. One member is the Town Own Land Study Committee, I don't know if that exists anymore. One member of the Planning Board, one member of the Zoning Board of Appeals, one member of the Community Preservation Committee, one member of the Advisory and Finance Committee, and one at large member appointed by the Selectmen to report back at a special or annual town meeting. So that was done, and they came back, and the town meeting they came back, it was two thousand and eight. I think they were before that too.
That was the annual two thousand and eight meeting.
Yeah, right, the annual, and here's what happened there.
You have the annual two thousand and eight?
To see if the town will vote to accept the recommendations of the Military Housing Advisory Committee, so there's a, you know, it's kind of a disconnected name, and to authorize the Board of Selectmen to proceed by issuing a request for development proposal or take any other action with the Board. On motion duly seconded, it was unanimous voted in favor to accept the recommendations of the Military Housing Advisory Committee and authorize the Board of Selectmen to proceed by issuing a request for development proposal. So the question is, what the hell was the, uh, recommendation of the committee? Because that seems to be what was accepted here.
I think it's the RFP that has continued to float around.
And the, um, so there's a whole section in the.
Yeah, that's exactly, they, they prepared an RFP proposal with the Board of Selectmen, and then we went to special town meeting and voted it in, so you've got two meetings in two thousand and eight.
The warrant article only cites the special town meeting.
Dan, you know you should do, and I, the, the words here, and going back and forth, the Valley Road School. This seems the same process, same identical process.
Well.
I mean, it's very simple, but it's, uh, it's just, I, I remember, we had five, six, seven town meetings on that, on that deal. And the last vote was to take it down and put two house slots there. And, uh, and that finally, it was changed at the last minute, on a Saturday morning, to save the school. And that whole scenario, we, the town meetings and the committees, I think they had five or six committees on that Valley Road School, and at least seven or eight town meetings, this thing, you know? But if we're not gonna, if we're not doing it, if we're not, and this article here is not addressing the two thousand and eight meeting, regular meeting. I mean, I don't know how, we can't amend this article, we, we.
Well, let us, let us take a look at it, and we'll, uh.
Well, it's, it's, this is the one that you really, this is, would be the one that would have to be amended, cause this is the la, the latter of the two.
No, I don't know.
Cause that doesn't, that doesn't rescind the previous vote.
All that did was authorize the Selectmen to.
Sell it.
To sell it to those people.
Develop in the RFP.
That's right, but this is the one that authorized the Selectmen to sell it, actually do the same.
If that one gets rescinded, Enzo, though, the one that's still there is the one that says it authorizes you to proceed by using a request for development. That's the one that's still in effect.
This, this, this one here is saying the Board of Selectmen.
Well, I'm just, I'm just trying to look for a, a way to.
That one doesn't kill the other one automatically.
This Board of Selectmen to, uh, put in the single-family homes with the multiple condos.
Right.
That was the vote, and that was the vote of the town meeting, there was three choices that annual town meeting had, and they selected that one there, which was, I believe, was in the middle, either going, you know, selling the twelve units, or, I forget the three options, but this is the only option.
I think that might have been a different town meeting.
Yeah.
And that town meeting, town meeting set up the two thousand and eight town meeting.
Right.
And the two, eight, two thousand and eight town meeting says adopt the recommendations of the committee, but doesn't say what they were. And I think you have to look at the FinCom discussion, discussion of this in the two thousand and eight annual meeting FinCom report.
Yes.
Because they had a list of five, uh, goals, but I, I think they were goals that were to be, to be responded to by the person or the organization that was gonna carry it out. I, I, it's just very, it's confusing to me.
That town meeting authorized the Board of Selectmen to, to develop an RFP, and to go out and present it, and then that RFP was put out to a bid.
Right.
And the bids came back, I believe there was five bids, and that.
Right.
This was, this was just the one that, this, this meeting was just.
The winning bid.
This was the winning bid, that's all that was.
So was it ever solved, Richard? The sale didn't take place?
No, well, it didn't, and it backed out.
We, we, it was, um, the, the winning bid bidder, um, put up the money, you know, for it, and then, um, he came back and he, um, he pulled his bid, he pulled, he, 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 he just couldn't financially do it.
But what'd you do with the money?
He built a new house on Willow Road.
Is that right?
That question I've been asking for years.
All right, I think this needs to be studied, and somebody's gotta figure out what has to be done. And if you're gonna do a motion that's different in some ways from the article as it was written in the warrant, if somebody could get me a copy of that as quickly as possible, so I can take, I'm not, it's, I mean, we've got time.
Let me ask you a question, can we create a new motion, a new article?
The new article stays as it is.
As it is.
It has to stay as it is, but the wording of the motion doesn't have to match the article identically. What it has to do is to, to call for a motion that is within the contemplation of the article as it was worded. So people can't come to town meeting and say, wait a minute, you said you were gonna sell it, and now you're gonna loan it out. It can't be inconsistent with the article, you have to do something that's within the four corners of the article.
But that motion that we make, okay, to straighten this thing out, is gonna be more confusing to the jury people sitting in the audience, what do you know, I don't understand, we'll have to go through each of these meetings.
Well, maybe we could have something in writing that people can be handed, so that they can read it.
I think that would be a very smart idea.
No, that might be a good idea.
I think, Dan, you'll have to take a look at this and try to pick through it.
Well, I'm looking at Article nine now, I don't see a need for it to rescind this. It was simply authorized, authorized the BO at the Board of Selectmen to proceed by issuing RFP. They did that, it's done.
Yes.
It didn't go forward, there's no need to rescind this article. They did it, they were authorized, unless the motion is drastically different than the article I'm reading in front of me, they've done it, they were authorized, they did it, it didn't work, move on, to the next part.
So that's why I think you need to kind of do some more research, just to see if we have an issue here or if we don't.
Okay.
And then, um, I think Enzo has brought up a question as to whether we can fashion a motion that moves in the direction of this conversation, and you just have to stay within the four corners.
I, I would, it would be good if you could, if you could do a motion, you know, I think somebody's right when they say that just giving you the authority to go and do whatever the hell you want, it's not gonna float very well.
No, I don't think so, I think we need to have a committee, I, I would agree with them, um, and, and, to do it right.
Yeah, so I think what you need to do is get a motion together, and word it in a way that might, might be acceptable to the FinCom, and then you can maybe avoid that, that fight. If you can't, you can't, we'll take care of it on the town meeting floor, but it seems to me we've got an opportunity here. I think probably everybody's thinking of doing the same sort of thing, and getting it done in the right way. So it seems like there ought to be a way to get together on it.
Absolutely.
If there isn't, then the town will get it together.
I read.
Somebody, whoever's thinking of that motion, could take a look at that. All right, now, having said all that. All right, now, having said all that, and having given Peggy back all this stuff, let us move on to, um, we have a zoning change. And this is Article, I mean, thirty-five, we're at thirty-five, we're getting there, ladies and gentlemen. The article is a zoning change, so it needs two-thirds vote, it also needs a Planning Board report. And what is the general, can you say for the people in, in television land, what's the general gist of what's intended to be done here?
This is the one on the, uh, ceiling?
No, this is the site plan. The site plan.
My understanding that this was originated with the Selectmen, who raised a question of when, in a town, educational and other eligible organizations propose a development proposal that's protected by state law, that doesn't allow the full normal range of local approval. But that law does in fact allow the town to have, if it has so provided previously, site plan review of the proposal. And so to the extent that any such, uh, developments are proposed in the town, and we pass an amendment of this nature, it gives the Planning Board, to the extent that the law allows it, a chance to modify the proposal, comment on the proposal, shape the proposal in a way that will protect the town, rather than sitting idly by and letting somebody simply do what state law allows. So this proposition tries to, to the extent possible, preserve local input into any such development in the heart.
Thank you for that brief description. Two-thirds majority, Planning Board report, zoning ordinance amendment number thirty-five. Article thirty-six is a stormwater bylaw. To amend the Stormwater Management Bylaw, as voted in Article one, April twenty-five, twenty fifteen, as recommended by the Attorney General. So moved by adding amendments as all recorded in the town court's office. Thank you, what you got in there?
So Richard has this one as well.
Richard, this is yours, too?
Yes, I got all the good stuff. In this particular case, we, um, we proposed, and the town passed, a stormwater drainage-related bylaw, which required that under certain construction projects, methods be undertaken to mitigate the drainage of inappropriate materials into public water supplies and sources and, into the groundwater. The Attorney General accepted the basic, and, and the town meeting accepted that. The Attorney General accepted the broad amendment, but indicated that in a number of minor respects, it was incomplete or inadequate or inconsistent with what they want, and therefore asked for specific amendments for that, uh, bylaw in order to have it become fully effectuated by approval by the Attorney General. We were provided this information by, by, uh, town manager, I assume, town council, and we are simply proposing, and it seems reasonable to us and ought to be adopted, so we can fully effectuate the bylaw. And the bylaw is highly-
It's terrible, because other people look at it in varying ways to make sure we're doing the right thing.
Thank you for that succinct description, and that will be a majority vote. Article thirty-seven is on a-
That's actually a two-thirds vote, sorry.
Is it?
Yeah, it's a two-thirds.
A bylaw, we'll check on that.
Yep.
It's a non-zoning bylaw, I think it's majority, but our town council will- So, um, Article thirty-seven is a citizen petition to require the owners of apartment buildings and complexes and condominiums to provide a dumpster for recyclables and to ensure that the recyclables are processed to the recycling facility. That would be a straight majority vote. Article thirty-eight is a citizen petition, generally described as seeking greater transparency in political donations. Does anybody know what is being sought here?
It appears to, the petitioner is looking to get, have the town state that they would like to send to our state rep, Senator Congressman, um, a sense of the town that we would like to see greater transparency in donations and political PACs and lobbying. And they generally state this, there's not a lot of specificity to it, so it's really intended to kind of, again, create greater transparency. I can't speak for the petition.
Well, is this the motion the petitioner is going to make?
Yes.
That will be a straight majority vote. Article thirty-nine is a citizen petition requesting the state senator and representative not support a call for Article five, Convention of Amendments to the Federal Constitution. As I understand it, there has not been any requests for Article five, Convention of Amendments to the Constitution.
There is not, so what they're seeking is to, um, again, have the town express that they would like to prevent those from happening, and that our state senator representative would try to prevent that from happening.
No matter what the proposed amendments might be?
Yeah, it's a, it's a sentiment, is what it appears.
And that's the motion that the petitioner will be reading. That's a straight majority vote. Article forty is a citizen petition to pass an ordinance to reduce gas leaks. And the, the motion on that will be to indefinitely postpone.
That was our recommendation, do we have the authority to override the petitioner on the motion as the Finance Committee?
Finance Committee has the motion, has the ability to recommend this petition of any article or petition or anything else out there.
You did that at the last town meeting?
Okay.
Petition, yes, you did.
Error. It seems to me that these things are put before you for recommendations for the town's benefit. And to collect them wisdom is important, now, as we've proven so many times. So we appreciate your, uh, your thoughts and your move to indefinitely postpone that sick article. Article forty-one is the traditional last article, to accept gifts in various conditions. For various purposes, and that will also be a very simple and quickly executed. So, I think we've made some progress tonight. Usually we just sit here and say, worry, two-thirds, whatever. But hopefully we've, uh, it seems like we've made some clarification and made some progress on reducing some of the issues that will otherwise make the town meeting not as pleasant as it ought to be.
What is the, what is the process, what happens if this goes on for four or five hours?
So what usually happens, although we haven't had to do that, because our FINCOM has been so stellar in years past, we haven't had, had a continuation of the Saturday, this evening, for quite a number of years. But what we do is, we take it as long as we reasonably can. And usually, we finish it by five-thirty, six o'clock. And if we're not done at that point, and if it doesn't look like we're close to being done at that point, then we will extend it to Monday. And we will have to play it by ear, as my father used to say all the time, and see where we are and what we may have done, and see how much time we allot on Monday. Typically, we would adjourn to five-thirty or six o'clock on Saturday. We, uh, we start on Monday at around seven-thirty. But, you know, it depends on how much is left to be done and what collection timing of it is, so we'll just have to look at it on Saturday. But I, I, I think we can get through this, I'm sure, we really do. Especially if some of the simplifications that we're looking for are affected. Thank you all, I know how hard you work and how concerned you are of all the issues that are so important to the town. So I really appreciate your efforts, everybody. And, uh, I hope we have another successful town meeting. We will. Always have its interesting moments, I'm sure. So thank you, I hereby cede the, uh, meeting back to the chair.
Okay, thank you, as usual, nice job.
My pleasure.
I'm not sure if you guys want to stay for the rest of our Selectmen meeting, or if you'd like to leave. You're dismissed, I, I didn't want to dismiss you, but I mean, I-
We would gladly like to leave.
Moving in touch?
My phone always rings.
Be right back.
Okay, great, all right, thank you. It was a very good moderators' meeting, and we've got a few items that we have to take care of, of the Selectmen meeting. Richard Snyder from the Planning Board already did the Planning Board review, uh, report, so we'll, we'll go past that issue. He'll also provide that at the town meeting as well. The question that come up amongst the Selectmen about the Charles Kelly Scholarship amount, right now it's currently at five hundred dollars is the award. You can see in your packet that we have about fourteen thousand dollars in that account, and that you had discussed the potential of increasing that award amount each time. And so I, I, I ask you what your policy direction is on that.
Gentlemen, what's your pleasure?
I don't have a problem increasing it to a thousand dollars.
Make a motion?
I'll make a motion that we increase the Charles Kelly Scholarship Fund from five hundred to a thousand, I mean, with rising costs.
Yeah, is there a second?
Second for the discussion.
Second discussion, okay, discussion.
Could I ask that that be for next, starting next year? Uh, we've already completed the process in this year.
Why wouldn't you get it to them this year?
We've already, we've already sent the information to them, we can modify it.
Yeah, I don't see, give it to them this, whoever it is, I don't know who it is, a thousand dollars, yeah. I, I-
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I, okay.
Oh, T?
T, what do you, what do you think, T?
On discussion?
Yeah.
I thought that the process was well-done, I thought Mary Ellen did a great job on the process, because I had no clue.
I didn't either.
I went by what I thought was best, and then second, third, fourth, and fifth, I thought that was well-done.
Well, she always does it that way, yeah.
Yeah, well, it's my first time with it, so, I, I was impressed with it.
I don't know who's, yeah, they come out blank, you know.
Right, that was very nice. I could see it going to a thousand dollars this year if, if we amend it.
Yeah.
Okay.
Motion to amend for this year, and, uh-
Well, we, we never, we never, we never specified, so we're just, we're just gonna vote the thousand dollars, and it's gonna start immediately.
Immediately, right.
All those in favor, single, say aye.
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 Motion carried.
Okay, great, thank you, we'll start that process immediately. Next item has to do with just a report on the sewer, emergency sewer breaks we had. As Enzo had referenced, we had one just recently back on four-seven, and then we had one just before that on four-five. The lin, the, I, the sewer break on four-seven was on the Linway, it was a significant break, and it was for a forced main. The four-five break was also a forced main, but it was much more manageable, because it was in front of the, on Willow Street, in front of the golf course. But both of those have a combined cost of somewhere north of about two-hundred-and-seventy thousand dollars at this point. We're trying to finalize the specific costs, but I just wanted to bring to your attention the, the scale of this. They were significant, I believe that our DPW handled it beautifully.
Oh, yeah.
We brought in Grenice, as, um, Enzo had said, and they handled it also beautifully.
Yeah.
And so, everybody's to be commended, it's just that because you're dealing with forced mains in these locations, the costs were significant. And so, I'll be looking at some funding alternatives and bringing that to you for discussion.
Okay, I just want to make one more remark on that. Somebody was responsible for that, because there was a catch basin built on top of the forced main, which drove a hole through it in front of, uh, um, the U-Haul on the Limway. So my suggestion is to go after either the insurance company, or the state, or whoever put the catch basin there, because they're supposed to utilize DigSafe, no matter what they do. And, you know, the constant pounding of that, that, uh, catch basin on top of that, um, sewer main blew it up, and that, that cost us a quarter of a million dollars, and that, that's an awful lot of money for the town to come up with, so. And that, I don't believe that sewer main is that, all that old. Going, I think it's in the seventies or eighties maybe, was done?
Christ, correct, it wasn't that old, and, and the, uh, the blowout was right there at that location.
So I suggest that we go after the, either the insurance company, or have council go after the insurance company, or, um, the state, and say, look, you know, you gotta, this is your problem, this is what you did, and, um, you gotta, you have to pay, you have to pay for it, simple as that.
Okay, let us take a look at that. But again, that's the scale of what we're talking about, this will become part of Article three when we finalize it, because this will be a transfer request within the sewer and water.
Okay.
But I'll, I'll give you the final figures when we have that. Last item is we have an event request from the Johnson School, they're doing a sixth grade moving on ceremony here at Town Hall, which is great, it's on six-twenty seventeen at six P.M., and I just need a use request authorization from the board.
Motion to approve?
I move the Board of Selectmen vote to approve the Johnson School event request for sixth grade moving on ceremony, six-twenty, two thousand seventeen at three P.M. at Town Hall.
Motion been made, second?
I'll second it.
Discussion, all those in favor, single, say aye.
Aye, aye.
And that's all I have for you tonight.
Won't you hold off the rest of the stuff till next week?
Yep, that's fine, May fourth.
After the town meeting?
May fourth, okay, great, it is late, yes.
But we, do, we need to get together, the board, to get prepared for town meeting?
What I traditionally is post-meeting, just before the start of town meeting.
Do it for Thursday night?
Um, we can do Thursday night, but I choose to do it Saturday, Saturday morning, yeah.
Yeah, why don't you do that?
Okay. Okay, yeah. And then the FINCOM meets just before as well, so-
Well, the FIN, yeah, we usually, yeah, just in case, usually, usually it's for the contracts, boss man, the contracts.
Yep.
We've got all the contracts ready to go, right?
We do.
We should, okay. We better get some answers for this 2005, '08, and get that, that motion.
Well, it's something by Monday, and then we have an entire week to kind of work it out amongst ourselves.
I have Dan write it up so we're legally covered, you know, so that we can get our amendment through.
Correct.
Right?
Yeah, I mean, I, we have to, it's got to be done right, and obviously it wasn't done right.
Well-
So.
I never thought about the second meeting of the 2008. The problem was those two meetings, one was an annual town meeting in 2008, and it was the, the, that 2008 annual meeting authorized us to go forward, and we had a special meeting to award the RFP, get the RFP ready.
That was actually the one, it was to award it, and that's what I'm looking at right here, so.
Yeah, so we're going to have to get the motion for that.
Dan, I'll take a look at that.
You make sure Dan writes it all up and gets it to us so we can prove it.
I'll try to do something for end of day tomorrow so that, or, so you have time, and then I'll get it to you.
We want enough information so we can explain it to the town people, so we won't get caught up, you know, confusing, okay? Very good. I'll tell the motion adjourned.
I motioned that we adjourn the meeting of-
April 20th.
April 20th, 2017. Are we going to go into executive session?
No.
Okay, T, I mean, you don't want to.
Well, no, it's quarter to 10 at night, I, you want to?
I don't mind going in.
Well, I, I, well, you two can go, I don't need me.
No, 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 we need all three, so.
Well, I just, I, I've been, I've been going all day, and I'm kind of whipped.
That's okay, all right. I'll second it to motion, want to second the motion to adjourn? Second. Okay.
Before we adjourn, why don't you schedule a meeting next Thursday night?
Okay.
Thursday before the town meeting, all right? And so we can get a, a deck, and then also we can have the executive session.
Okay.
Is that all right with you?
Yes. Yeah, I do, I would-
Then we can move, we won't be on the camera or anything, but we just get our, Dan should have that wording done by next Thursday, right?
Mm-hmm.
So maybe have him with us, meet us there?
Yeah.
All right, so we can make sure the wording on the amendment and that-
That actually could be part of the meeting?
Yes.
Yeah.
Although I am, yeah.
Discuss it, you know, whatever it is.
Well, whatever he, he writes up, and we've got to follow, or whatever, you know, we've got to discuss it, and then we can go into an executive session to discuss his performance evaluation, all right?
Yeah, yeah. Fair enough.
All those in favor, German, aye?
Aye.
Ross F. Pedro.